I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for September 24th, 2024. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Alesskowitz?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Shade? Wilkinson?
Present.
Eight members present, we have a floor. Please stand for a moment of silent remembrance. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the September 10, 2024 city council meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any come, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing of visitors, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties, please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody for hearing of visitors? Please step up to the mic, name an address for the record, please.
Council President.
Name an address for the record.
Yes, can you hear me?
You'll have to use your outdoor voice tonight.
All right. Hi, my name is Meredith Starr. Address is 77 Barth Street, North Adams. Council President Sapienza, I do have a copy of a letter for you, if you would like it. But I came here tonight to speak to you guys and to present some facts regarding the ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter Z, Section 10.12, Licensed Marijuana Establishments. So I'm Meredith, I am the Youth Prevention Coordinator with the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition. What my role is, is I am the Youth Substance Use Prevention Coordinator. And every two years, NBCC facilitates the surveying of eighth, 10th, and 12th grade students here in Northern Berkshire County, at each of the designated schools. This survey, it's called the Prevention Needs Assessment, or PNAS for short. The PNAS assists in the identification of risk factors that contribute to youth substance use, as well as protective factors that contribute to the delay of substance use to adulthood. The 2022 Survey of Northern Berkshire Students identified that 62.7% of students across the grade span believe that parents' attitudes favor antisocial behaviors, which are those such as being suspended from school, being drunk or high at school, using alcohol, smoking cigarettes or marijuana, or stealing, just to name a few. These antisocial behaviors are risk factors for early onset of substance use. At least 39% of the students believe that their parent attitudes favor drug use. Additionally, 46.5% of students felt that the laws and norms-
Your time has expired.
Okay.
All right.
But we'd like to hear more from you at some point.
Okay.
Can we put her on the agenda at some time?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other folks would like to come up for hearing of visitors on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Council Paper Number 11,646-D, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter Z, Section 10.12, entitled Licenseed Marijuana Establishments, Postponed from the Meeting of September 10th, 2024. Councilor Shade is not here tonight. Councilor Alesskowitz, would you like to update us, please?
In the absence of the Committee Chair of General Government, Ashley Shade not being here, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until the first meeting of October.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone till the first meeting of October.
Second.
Second.
We have a second, okay. Councilor Bona?
Are we in discussion?
Yes, we can go into, yeah, we can go into discussion.
So, just a suggestion, if the committee is going to still meet again, possibly that would be a meeting you should attend, because that's more open with no time limits. Okay, so I'll let Councilor Shade know, to possibly let her know when a meeting might come up.
Councilor Blackmer?
That meeting is going to be on October, Wednesday, October 9th, and not the 8th, correct?
That is correct, Wednesday, October 9th, yep.
So we put that date certain in.
Yep. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor to postpone for the first meeting on October?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,393-2, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, under Chapter 13, Sections 26, 49, and 50, referred back to public safety to look into safety zones, with a return date of September 24th, 2024. Councilor Blackmer, do you have an update for the council?
I've moved to continue till 10/22, second meeting in October, 10/22/24.
Second.
And my update is, we met, we talked about it, one of the things we want to do is have a meeting where we'd like to have some legal counsel on how we would establish the safety zone. I know that Chairperson King from the Traffic Commission gave us some direction, but I'd like to make sure that we're following national law, but we'd also like some input from the Police Department, and whether that's the Chief or Lieutenant Beverly, and Commissioner Will Scarborough from Public Services, and obviously also if Chairperson King could come from the Traffic Commission. So that's what we'd like to do, and we need some time to do that, and get everybody on the same page.
Great, any further comments on that? Okay, motion to postpone till the second meeting of October, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,422-A, Communication Number 69 from Mayor Maxey, requesting a consideration, reconsideration of final vote to correct advertising error. Do we have a motion? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, I'll read the communication from the mayor. Dear, the communication number 69, Dear honorable councilors, it has been brought to my attention that the order was not properly advertised prior to the final vote that was taken on September 10th, 2024. Bond, council has advised that a reconsideration to the final vote, as a technical redo, has to be completed to correct the process. Clerk, City Clerk Lynn Azio will answer any questions you have in this matter, respectfully submitted, Jennifer Maxey, Mayor. Councilor Brain?
Through the chair, the mayor, will it impact the cost of the software at all?
No.
There would be no change?
No.
The offer is still open to that?
No.
Councilor Wilkinson?
Just out of curiosity, what was wrong with the ad?
So, what happened was, I misunderstood on this type of order. I thought that it was just having to be run twice, but it has to run for a specific amount of time, the 10 days before, and it has to run after. So, when I ran the first one, I did not run for the full 10 days. So, we just need to do a technical redo of our final vote, because the first ad still counts, and you don't want to rescind it, our lawyer said, you want to just redo, you want to reconsider and re-vote, and then just place the ad for the final vote again, and we're going to be all set.
We have to advertise it again?
Just for the final vote.
Is that additional expense to the city?
It is about 200 and something, I think this ad ran. It was, it was either my 180 something or 240 something, I don't remember which ad it was.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Blackmer, and then Councilor Alesskowitz.
I think you've kind of answered my question. So basically, we have to advertise it, and because it's bond, it has to be advertised again for a certain number of days before the vote, or after the vote, and so-
The first one did not run for the correct amount of days.
Before we took the second vote.
Before we took the final vote.
Okay.
So by redoing the final vote, because I actually spoke to council twice, by redoing the final vote, the first ad is fine, I just have to place our final vote ad after that, after tonight, tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Alesskowitz?
Thank you, my question was answered.
Okay, mayor, did you have something to add? Okay. All right, so, we have a motion, do we have a motion on this?
We didn't put it next to the order yet.
You didn't, okay, yep.
Yeah, we just did the communication.
Move to file the communication?
Yeah. We can file the communication, yep.
Yeah, file the communication.
Okay. Council Paper Number 12,422, An Order to Authorize the Appropriation in the Amount of $535,562 for the Purpose of the Purchase and Installation Computer Software Assistant Integrated Financial Management and Accounting System. To meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to MGL, Chapter 44, paragraph, or Section 7, Paragraph 9, to issue bonds and notes, therefore being brought back to council for reconsideration of final vote to correct advertising error. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
I'm still here, yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Eight aces.
Motion passes. Council Paper Number 11,826-4A, A Communication from Councilor Bona Regarding an Amendment to Appendix D, Section D7, Public Service Department. Going to file the communication without objection, Councilor Bona?
Yeah, so this is going back to when we approved Appendix D, the fees and fines, and after the, after we approved it and it went out to the departments, it was noted that there was a small section of water fees that was missing from it, and that's what this is, we're just putting those fees into place where they were already approved by committee before.
Okay. All right.
Do you need a motion on that?
Motion.
Do we got to move on to the order?
I'm sorry.
Yep. Council Paper Number 11,426-4A, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Appendix D, Fees and Fines, Section D7, Public Service Department. Do we have a motion?
Move to pass through second reading and publish as required by law.
Second.
Okay, Councilor Blackmer, Councilor Wilkinson. Any further discussion? Council Brain?
I have a question on the ordinance, school road, school road opening 25 feet and then 275, what is the school road opening, and what does the 275 mean?
Council Brain, we're on a, we're on the fees and fines, I think you're in the wrong section.
No, I'm, I'm in the middle of the fees and fines.
Okay.
But that's for committee, for when, the answer to that question is probably directed towards Law Commissioner or Public Works or Public Services.
Yeah, I mean, at the time, these went through committee, and I don't know without the commissioner here to remember exactly what those were, but those-
Do you know what school road opening is?
I'm not sure. Through the chair, mayor, do you have an idea what that might be?
I think that is if we open, we have to do any repairs for a school that is not part of our system, that there's a fee assessed, but we can get further clarification for him, and I think there's a minimum and a maximum.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion?
A lot of those fees were not new fees, they've been on, because we were moving them from ordinance to Schedule D, so some never even changed, they just got moved over.
I just wonder what it is.
Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We will post that to a, publish it as required by law. Council Paper Number 12,426, Petition from National Grid Requesting a Public Hearing for New Pole Location on Hodges Cross Road. Let me read the petition into the record. A petition for joint or identical pole locations to the City Council, Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA, National Grid, and Verizon, New England, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. This will be on Hodges Cross Road, National Grid to install one JO pole, which stands for jointly owned pole, on Hodges Cross Road, beginning at a point approximately 370 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Kern Highway. Install midspan pole number 16-50 approximately 100 feet west of pole number 17 to support low-hanging wires, North Adams, Mass. And there is a plan that will be attached. Wherefore appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with Mark Hodges Cross Road, North Adams, Mass, file number is number 30996157. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings, as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles, for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality, and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Signed, National Grid and Verizon, New England. And I propose to set a public hearing for Wednesday, October 9th, at 7:00, at the start of the regular council meeting. Can we get a motion?
I don't think we need one.
You just set the hearing.
Okay.
You, you set the hearing, we don't need a motion.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to set the hearing for Wednesday, October 9th, 7:00 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Council Paper Number 12,427, Communication Number 65 from Mayor Maxey, recommending the appointment of Josh Valiers to serve as a member of the Youth Commission for a term to expire September 24th, 2027. I move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Paper Number 12,428, Communication Number 66 from Mayor Maxey, presenting an order to transfer $62,450.85 from the city's parking meter reserve account to purchase a new police cruiser. I'm going to file the communication without objection. Mayor, would you like to speak to us on this, please?
Yes, so in the past, we have somewhat budgeted prior to my time for police cruiser purchases within the budget. I hope to get back to that in the next fiscal cycle, but in the meantime, we are in desperate need of a new police cruiser. We currently have $241,000 in the parking meter reserve, and with this transfer of 62 and change, will leave us approximately $179,000. So we certainly have enough money in the parking meter reserve, and Chief Bailey is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have about the fleet. But as you know, our cars run quite a bit, some of them have over 100,000 miles. We are fortunate enough to pick up two vehicles used from the town of Williamstown, which used to them is like new to us, but we felt it's very important to add a new car to this fleet. Previously, way back when, we had purchased two police cruisers, and you were kind enough to do a transfer similar to this, so I hope for the same thing to occur tonight. But Chief Bailey is here to answer any questions about the fleet.
Okay, Council Wilkinson, through the chair, to the mayor.
You mentioned $62,000, this is buying one of the used vehicles from Williamstown, is this a new one?
No, the brand new, 62,000.
I was just confused there since you-
Yeah, one brand new cruiser.
And if I may follow up?
Yes, go ahead, council.
To the chief? I know this has probably been mentioned before, but probably most of us don't remember, how many active police cruisers do we have presently running?
So we have seven marked patrol cruisers and nine unmarked cruisers.
Yeah, 16 total.
Yes.
Is there a revolving plan of some sort to, that's a lot of vehicles.
Right, so the, the studies have shown that we want to keep our vehicles, our frontline vehicles around 100,000, when we say 100,000, we try and refurbish them in other aspects. So those frontline vehicles then become the unmarked vehicles, and then we try and buy a new one to replace them. But currently, our frontline vehicles, I have five that are over 100,000 miles. The one that we just replaced was at 180,000 miles, that we replaced with a Williamstown cruiser, which we purchased around 100,000 miles. The next one will be 90,000 miles. The reason for doing that is we're basically putting Band-Aids on it, on our frontline fleet, until we can get newer vehicles, but we're putting on about 25,000 miles a year per cruiser. The unmarked vehicles, I can say, we got one of them, the school was gracious enough to purchase one for our SRO, so that didn't cost us anything, it's just the upkeep and the gas that we have to pay for that. That one that she was driving went to our ACO, so he's driving that, and he furnished that so he could pick up the animals and dogs, and bring them down to the pound. And the other ones are for the detectives, they each have their own vehicles, myself and the lieutenant as well.
Well, I guess my, my question is, I have no problem getting another vehicle, I'm sure you definitely need it, it's a matter of, is there a plan in place, so we're going to buy one this year? Do we have like buy one a year plan, or do we have any plan replacing the rest of the fleet?
My hope is that we get one every single year. We haven't purchased a new one for the past two years.
Oh, I know, it's been a while since you've come to council.
Right, and then, so I'm trying to bring our frontline fleet down to the 100,000 mile mark, and then start really ensuring that we get a new one every single year, and then we use the one that we get to put it back into our, our unmarked vehicles, and then get rid of the unmarked vehicles after they-
Obviously, the parking meter fund is not going to have enough money to fund one every year, so that would have to be something that Mayor Maxey would have to work toward a budget.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Council Brain?
A couple of questions. You have seven marked cars?
Yes.
Okay, so, and you're doing about 25,000 miles per year on each of them?
Correct.
And you want to do it at 100,000 miles, so that means a life of that car is four years.
Correct, yeah.
And looking at the, the capital budget here, it looks like they're wanting to replace one per year.
Yes.
So, you really have to double that, a little bit less than double, you have to buy two cars per year, or else you're going to fall behind by three cars every five years.
Unfortunately, my statistics are based on the fact that we didn't have enough frontline cruisers this year, so we were, because of all the repairs that we had, we had excessive amount of miles put on frontline cruisers. We were running some 24 hours a day-
Right.
-at one point, so-
So, saying that, I'm also looking, the budget is showing in the 407 account, $70,000 for vehicles, has that already been used?
That's for vehicle repair.
That, I'm sorry, that's for, that's for vehicle repair, correct.
So, so there's no money in the budget at all for vehicles?
Vehicle purchase, correct.
Okay, and so the capital, we have to fund the capital, so this year's budget doesn't even have one car in it?
Correct.
Okay, and the other thing is, it looks like you were running $78,000 in that account in repairs.
Yes.
How much for like oil changes and that, how much are you running a year on that?
I don't, I don't have those figures in front of me, but it's costly, I could definitely say that repairs is, the price of the parts are pretty much equal to the maintenance as well.
Okay.
So, whatever, I mean, the best thing that we could possibly do, which could be a discussion, is to get a, a city mechanic to take care of all of our vehicles.
That's where I'm heading, the other thing is tires.
Correct.
How many sets of tires are you going through a year, if you're doing 25,000 each?
We go through a lot, but that also depends on whether or not we get something in a tire, we have to repair them.
Eight to 12 sets?
Correct, yeah.
So, you got that money there, so you're talking another 15,000 just for tires?
Correct.
Oil changes, probably $9,000, so you got $25,000 just in preventative maintenance in wear and tear. The, the other thing is, it's, it's showing here at 56,000 in the capital budget, and this is showing 62,000. Is that with the gear on it, or do you-
That's, that's fully outfitted.
That's fully outfitted?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, can you cannibalize any off of the old ones, or you, you have to add that every single time?
We do, we usually cannibalize the radios, the mounts for the, the computers, the actual computers themselves. We've, we've, we're starting to go away from having the, the pushbars on the front of the vehicles. We don't need those anymore, so you're going to start seeing the cruisers without them. So yeah, we do, we try and get as much as we can from the old vehicles and put them on the new.
And Chief, have you decided on a particular model that you, you want to replace the fleet with?
We like the Fords.
The Ford.
We still like the Fords right now. We were coming into a problem where during COVID, we weren't, we weren't getting vehicles fast enough, so we were trying to look at to see if we can go into Chevys, but fortunately, we still have a Ford dealership close by, and we've been sticking with Fords just for that.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. You're getting deeper in the hole, not getting out of the hole.
Well, with the, with the school purchasing us a vehicle, we don't have to worry about that, so we're, we're trying to come out of the hole by bringing down our mileage.
So, so we would be better to buy two cars this year?
I would love two cars this year, yeah.
And it, because it makes no sense to buy just one car, because you're, you're going to fall deeper into the thing, because you're, like you said, you're, you're wearing out the cars, you're putting more things on, if we, if we went the 62,000 times two out of the, the account that, the balance is, is still at 179, you'd be in a lot better shape at the end of this year, and start funding the capital at $60,000, and probably put something into your account, so you're at least one, one and a half vehicles every year, because right now, you've got 16 cars, and it, it looks like nine, nine to 10 of them are not up to par.
Correct, yes.
So, you, you said you have five cars over 100,000, you're doing 25,000?
Five of my front fleet are over 100,000, yes.
So we can say this time next year, those will have 125,000 on those five cars, and- And your benchmark's 100,000, so you'll have five cars that are under it. You'll have no cars left that are reliable, is basically what you're saying.
It's, it's going to get there, but we're hoping that with the more cars, that the less wear and tear.
Yeah, so my recommendation is two cars, not one car, while we have the money in the, from the meters.
Okay, Council Blackmore?
A couple of things. One, the unmarked are unmarked just because they're not the frontline?
Correct.
They're, you're not making a policy we're going to have more unmarked just as a policy then?
No, no, we're not, no.
Because marked units are much better.
The marked units are the ones you see out there, the NPD ones. The unmarked are for the detectives, the school resource officer, the ACO.
Okay. I would say that this is a conversation as part of the budget process and part of the capital plan, not necessarily part of this conversation. Also, how many, I mean, you, the 25,000 miles or more, depending on the situation, per year? But how much is spent idling? I mean, if there's an accident or any call, there's, seems like every cruiser in the city is there, but they could be there for an hour just idling.
Correct.
Are we turning them off at all? That's possible. And also, when you talked about oil change, I know they've gone, a lot of manufacturers are going with the synthetic, which gets you eight, 10,000 miles as opposed to three to 5,000 miles change. I didn't know if that was any part of our maintenance plan, but that's, like you said, having a mechanic in the city would be helpful. We wouldn't have downtime with the cruisers driving to Pittsfield and back. But I don't see the, I mean, I'd love to be able to buy a second cruiser, but I don't really want to take that fund all the way down to just, you know, to 120,000 either, so... That's my thought on that.
Council Oleskowitz?
Mine is just a comment, and it kind of feeds off of Council Brain in, Council Blackmore. I believe the same as well. I probably, I don't see that there would have been any issue if you would have asked for two cars, because as you said, as yourself, we were putting Band-Aids on an issue. There certainly is money in the account. And the parking reserve does grow more considerably than it has in the past with selling parking spaces in St. Elizabeth and the Center Street parking lot. So I think it probably would be more wiser to have more stability in your frontline vehicle. And we understand that the money, as Council Brain did bring up, the maintenance on these vehicles is quite pricey, as you say, parts, oil changes, tires. But I would hope in the future that we appropriate money in the budget process, as Council Blackmore did state that we can take, we can appropriate money for that because we don't want to, I hate seeing the fact that we're buying used cars for our police department. That's one of their number-one tools. Besides our communication, I believe very strongly that we don't support the police department enough in tools. Thank you.
No, I appreciate it.
Okay, Council Fitch?
Yeah, sure. What happens when a car comes off of the fleet? Is it sold? And if so, what are those funds used for?
Okay, so yeah, for instance, we have, if you notice our old police station, we have, what's, 206 is over there. So the Williamstown car that we got replaced that, which has 180,000 miles, but there was so much wrong with it that it's just sitting over there. So the plan is to lump that together with some other vehicles that are located in the city that aren't being run and trade those in for another vehicle and see if we can offset that price. So that's what we've been doing. But if it's still usable, like our old ACO vehicle was still usable, we gave that to the city yard for them to use. Unfortunately, it just, it costs too much money to repair, so that's just sitting there as well.
Council Bona?
Yeah, so I'm going to use this opportunity not specifically to talk about the cars, but to talk about the meters. Mayor Maxey, you know where I'm going with this. Along with the two previous administrations, annually, I ask, I remind, to trees, get us a parking mobile app. It will, you know, more and more cities I go to, it's available. Where there are no meters at all, I mean, I was recently up at Lake George on a side street, and there were just signs. You open your phone, boom, you're paying. We have most of Center Street parking lot that is not metered. We're not collecting from, other than permit parking. And literally, it would just require signs. And for people who don't have the app, it loads up. And again, I'm just using the one example in about one minute. And it reminds you when your meter's running out, you can pay more. It reminds you when you should be moving, when your time's running out. The percentage they take is small, but I feel it would increase our revenue. And there's no heavy equipment. It doesn't require kiosks. You can have kiosks, but it doesn't require it. But I do believe it would increase the revenue into that parking fund. You know, there's probably seven years I've been asking for it now, if not longer. And so I'm using the opportunity right now to just remind it again.
Council Wilkinson? After hearing the discussion, you know, I was very impressed with the figures that Council Brain presented. And the money that we have in the state of the fleet, I would be more than happy to support a purchase of a second vehicle.
You can't do that.
Can't do it.
Why?
It needs to come from the administration.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just saying, if it were to come, I would be more than happy to support it. After hearing the facts, somebody's got to take some action here off we're going to be driving around in Flintstone cars.
There you are.
Council Moro?
So Council Blackmore mentioned that the cars are driven to Pittsfield for repairs. What mechanic do you guys use?
Johnson Ford.
Johnson Ford, okay. And would you be able to use like a local mechanic? Or do they have to go?
Well, so I should, I should read it. So Johnson Ford is for all the fixes on any vehicles that we have that's under warranty. We take them down to Johnson Ford. We use Bedard Brothers to fix anything that is minor repairs. Or we try and stay local for our oil changes or for our tires. But yeah, the only reason we have to drive them down there is for warranty issues.
Okay, so, and are the cars going to gas too?
They, we have some that are hybrid, a couple that are hybrid, but we also have some of the gas scuddlers. So they are, they do use a lot of gas, but we also, you know, we have to, we have to get to where we got to go. So we, we drive them like we have to get there. I mean, that's just it. So you step on the gas, you use it, yeah. But, yeah.
Council Blackmore?
Two things. One, in response to Council Fitch's comment about getting rid of the vehicles, and there's actually procurement laws around it unless you're passing it off to another department within the city. So they've got to follow that, so, and I'm sure they do. Also, are they taking the cars to Details?
The Details, when they ask for a cruiser, we charge them extra. So we get some money for that. But yeah, they will bring them to Details if they're required at the Details.
Only if they're required, not just to bring them so they have one. I just want, and I want to make sure that we're charging whoever it is. The problem is, you know, do you get reimbursed by the state for the admin fee if it's a state job?
If it, if it comes through the Details, I think it, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, it goes to the fund, the general fund?
Yeah, if it comes to, if it comes to the contractor, we charge the administration administrative fee, yes.
Okay, because I know the state doesn't like to pay. This has been in the history that I've had. I think those were my big issues. But also, again, I know you have to get to something in a hurry, but a lot of, we don't have a lot of life-and-death things going on in this city, thank God, so we don't have to...
Well, we do.
We do, but a lot.
We have a lot. I mean, I can definitely stand here and say that our call, getting to that call is, we're there within minutes. And that's exactly what the people want, is when they call, we're there within minutes, especially for emergency situations.
Right.
I mean, I know that in the past, yeah, they've been blue-lighting it to, let's say, Walmart for a shoplifter. That doesn't happen anymore. But if you see the blue lights, if you see them driving fast, it's exigency, it's an emergency.
Okay, and the other thing is, I, I've heard this complaint from people in the community, and I've seen it, where there's, given the fact that we don't have a huge department, it gets a little discouraging sometimes to see four cruisers at one scene. I understand sometimes you need it for traffic, but just that.
We're getting more into policy.
Yeah, I know, and we're going to...
So this isn't a conversation we got here.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Council Oleskowitz. I was speaking, but my point is, we're talking about the use of a vehicle, and we're replacing it, and you jump on and say, yeah, let's buy another one. I'm trying to talk about using the vehicles and making them last longer. So please don't interrupt me again. I know what I'm talking about, you just...
Councilors, please.
You always just have to slip up to the facts.
We don't want to yell at anybody here.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. So I just want to make sure that we, I know, like you said, you don't light it to go unless it's an emergency, and I appreciate that. But it seems to be a little bit of a change, but we do see, and I've heard from the public, my constituents, our constituents, that they see that there's an accident or something. There's always like, everybody's there. And I worry sometimes that then we don't have the services where else we need them. That's all.
No, understood, understood, yeah. And please let me know if you hear anything.
I will.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Council Brain?
Just to make sure that I'm clear on this. The 407 account is for repair?
Well, for vehicle, yeah, for vehicle maintenance, yeah. I don't have it in front of me.
Are you in the police budget?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and it doesn't include the oil changes? It's just...
Yeah, it's under, it's how incorporate it is.
Because what I'm looking at, last year, the adopted budget was 48,000, and the actual was 78. There was $30,000 more of repairs last year than anticipated. And it was moved up to 70. That's $1,000 a cruiser for repairs. That's a half a car. Again, if you're under warranty, the extended warranty is four years. If you look at the repairs that you're doing on it, the cars that have 150, 160, 100,000, 180, those would be things that would have been not happening to a new car under warranty and be covered. So my, my concern is, the sooner we get in line, we can reduce this repair cost considerable in the reliability and the safety for the officers. Riding around a car, you know, a vehicle with that kind of miles on it in our winters is not a good idea.
I agree, correct.
So the other part of my question is to the president, what is the procedure to change it from 62 to 124? What needs to be done?
That would have to come from the administration. So, so what we would have to do is, we would have to, to the best of my knowledge, we would have to vote against this particular communication. And we would have to, the mayor would have to present another communication with a different amount.
I disagree. I disagree.
Before you approve this one, and we have another internal discussion.
We could do that as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We could do that as well.
Thank you for that.
Council Blackmore?
I was going to say that, like, it's been said, it comes from the administration. We cannot add to the budget or make these...
That's why I'm asking.
Right, that's, but at this point, I move the question.
Good. All right, we have motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That was, that was moving the question, was that correct?
Correct.
Yes, that is correct.
Now we vote on the question. I have the communication, I lost it.
Well, you, excuse me, point of order. Were you asking if that was a vote to move the question?
That's correct.
Versus the actual vote?
That was versus the actual vote, yes.
So that's not what he said?
That's not what I said. I said, we, there was a vote, and there was a motion and a second right after he said move the question. Typically, when you do that, you're voting on moving the question.
Right, that's what we did, we moved the question.
Then you need a vote on the actual order.
Correct, we have not voted on the...
We have not, oh, just clarifying. We have not voted on the...
We have not voted on the actual order.
No, because we've, we're still, we're on the communication, correct?
Yes, that is correct. You're on the communication. Council Fitch?
Tension is a little high in here still. Can everyone just take a breath and... Thank you.
I have a suggestion. Council Wilkinson? Can I have a two-minute recess to move that hour? All night long, Council Fitch has been standing behind it, and I can't see a thing he's doing.
Just move on, he's done.
We're getting close to the end, so... Well, how do I know he's not making funny faces at somebody? I've been watching him, he has... All right. Okay. Council Paper Number 12,428, An Order to Transfer $62,450.85 From the City's Parking Meter Reserve Account To Purchase a New Police Cruiser.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Wait a minute.
Go ahead, Council Brain.
Through the chair to the mayor. Is this 62,450 part of a bid?
Yes, it's purchase off the state bid list.
If, if this theoretically was two, would the price be lower?
We'd have to go back and see what the price would be.
Could it be lower?
Probably not, not for two. Usually, they don't discount unless you do five or more.
Okay, so, okay.
But we have, we'd have to go back through and see where pricing is now.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmore?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Brain?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, just one yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Moro?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes. Motion passes.
Communication number seventy of Council Paper number twelve thousand four thirty, communication number seventy from Mayor Maxi, recommending confirmation of the list of additional election workers for a term to begin on September.
We did skip one.
Were we, did I?
Four twenty-nine?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yep, okay, thank you. The page is stuck together. Okay, Council Paper number twelve thousand four twenty-nine, communication number sixty-eight from Mayor Maxi, recommending the appointment of Bruce Miller to serve as a member of the Board of Health for a term to expire September twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Council Paper number twelve thousand four three zero, communication number seventy from Mayor Maxi, recommending confirmation of the list of additional election workers for a term to begin on September twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, and expiring on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Mayor, do you have anything to add to that, please?
Yes, this list was presented by the city clerk. This is in addition to the list that you approved a month or two ago, so this will add to our pool of election worker candidates.
Move to adopt. Motion to adopt. And did we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Blackmore. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Council Paper number twelve thousand four three one, communication from City Clerk Leonazio, requesting to allow police, the police chief and city clerk, the responsibility to assign police officers to the polling place for the state election on November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council Paper number twelve thousand four thirty-two, in order calling for the state election for November fifth, twenty twenty-four, from seven AM to eight PM. Okay. Let me read this in. We were notified later this afternoon that we have to read the text of the five questions being presented at the, for the November fifth ballot. And it says, "Be adored by the City Council of North Adams, City Council of the City of North Adams as follows, the city clerk is hereby directed to cause to be published and posted as provided in section sixty-three of chapter fifty-four of the general laws, the following notice of election," this is a state election, Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four, City of North Adams. "In accordance with the provisions of chapter fifty-four of the general laws, notice is hereby given that the meetings of the citizens of North Adams qualified to vote will be held on Tuesday, the fifth day of November, twenty twenty-four, in the following locations. Wards one through five will be at the St. Elizabeth of Hungary Parish Center at Seventy Marshall Street. Polls will open at seven o'clock in the forenoon and close at eight o'clock in the afternoon. All voters will at the ward in which they are entitled to vote from between said hours cast their votes for offices as follows, plus ballot questions. And we will be electors, we will be selecting electors of president and vice president for the United States, Senator in Congress for the Commonwealth, Representative in Congress for this district, Counselor for this district, Senator in General Court for this district, Representative in General Court for this district, Clerk of Courts for the Berkshire County, and Register of Deeds for the county." In addition, there will be five questions. Please bear with me, this is gonna be a bit of a read here.
Do we really have to read these in?
Do you have to read the whole summary or just like?
We, so, this afternoon, when I got this, I had to include it in with our paper for our call, our call of election. I also have this, the whole thing, on our website. I even have who's running for what offices on our website. I typed that on mine. So, it is on our website.
But they, they clearly said we have to read this at our meeting?
They said that we had to include it in with the call of election.
Well, I think we are.
Because originally, I had just one page. That was it.
Well, it's included, but I don't think we have to read it.
Can, do we, can we read the questions and not the summary?
I can read the question.
I was gonna say, the questions make sense, but reading the summary, we're gonna be here all night.
No, I can read the questions, yes.
Okay.
One other question.
Counselor Breen.
We're announcing the poll, are we also announcing the early poll dates and times and the mail-in deadline?
So, for the November election, we will be having early voting for two weeks. It's going to be starting October nineteenth, and it will run to the Friday before the election. But it doesn't have to. That is gonna be for in-person early voting. So, right after, we're just waiting for the, the first week of October, we're gonna be, we're expecting to get our early voting ballots. So, literally, right after we're done with the October eighth election, we are going to be sending out, I believe we have over, going on nineteen in the system already for requests. So, we'll be sending out a ton of early mailing ballots, right after we're done with October eighth.
Counselor Blackmore?
Okay, the, the council paper is the call for the election.
Yes.
The conversation about that needs to be a separate conversation, we could do it as an update at the end of the meeting, but I don't wanna confuse people, this is just the call for the election.
This is for the general election.
And then we can move forward with that discussion, or not.
Okay, moving forward, let me read the summary of the questions. Question one, law prohibited by initiative petition, do you approve of a law summarized below on which no vote was taken by the Senate or the House Representatives, honored before May first, twenty twenty-four? Summary, this proposed law would specify that the state auditor has the authority to audit the legislature. Yes would specify the?
I don't think you need to read that.
You're reading the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, okay, I'll just read the summaries.
Just the question.
We'll just look at.
That is.
That is part of the question.
The summary. The summary is only a paragraph for each one of them.
I still, I still.
There's, there's five different questions.
Can we get away with moving the question?
Yeah.
No.
No?
No. The summary's not the question, the question is the question. The summary is a description of the question.
The problem is that there is no question, and he, if you read each one, it's under the summary.
It is.
I can summarize these really quick, I can.
Yeah, this is exactly how it came from the state, so I, I took this exactly from what the state gave us.
Just read the first sentence of each one.
Would it?
All right, so.
I have a question, really quick.
Go ahead, Counselor Morrow.
Would it be possible to just read the question and then read the, a yes voted and no, because then that kind of describes.
No, what I'll do is, I think what I'll do is, I'll read the question one, and I'll say it's to specify whether or not we have, the state auditor has the authority to audit the legislature, I'll summarize to the best.
I still feel, they told you to include it, you included it. It did not say we have to read it, it's a correspondence, it's so.
I agree.
It's available, it's gonna be on the website.
Nowhere does it say you have to read it, it's, it's included in our package.
Okay.
It's available to the public.
Yes.
On our website.
Yeah, and the state has published booklets that have been distributed to the voters in Massachusetts, okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Move on, I move, move on.
We still have to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt.
We have to.
To adopt. Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Second.
Okay. This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmore?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaska?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Okay, licenses. Application submitted by John Timothy Spencer to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for RJ's taxi.
Motion to approve.
Did we do that one?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Open forum, this is an opportunity to the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended, and as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody for open forum, please step up to the mic, name an address for the record, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Dean McColl.
Outdoor voice, please.
My name is Dean McColl, I live on Eagle Street, three sixty-three, and I'm revisiting the topic of the proposed logging at Natche Reservoir. So I do thank the, the mayor for the public information session we had a couple of weeks ago. I, however, I request further extension of the public review period past the September thirtieth, because, as we understand, the harvest plan is not yet finalized, and we need thirty days of a public review possibility before it goes to DCR for approval, because the printed version of ours to the public currently still specifies herbicides, which we absolutely saw, there is no mistake about that. That's very, very important to many people in this town. And a further issue that came up at that, from the questions asked by the public at that session, the proposed logging plan, although there has been a low hydrological review of the plan, there is a very clear plan to clear cut within fifty feet of the reservoir, and also make two landing areas of approximately, at minimum, an acre each on Bell's Pipe Trail, there's three actually, but close enough to the reservoir, that would definitely cause erosion, so patient with the reservoir. So patient with the reservoir is a major expense, draining the reservoir, a major expense, is something that the city council will learn in the future and need to really spend for, be better to avoid making an emergency situation out of that, and have public review and/or expert review of this plan, of people who are not the loggers before it goes to DCR for final approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Walt Kudniewski, I'm a landscape architect, land and community planner, and I speak as a member of the Friends of the Natche Forest and the Bell's Pipe Trail. And we have had the opportunity to walk carefully the entire property with the plan in hand and study the plans more in more detail as we've had a little more time. I encourage you all to go. In twenty fourteen and twenty seventeen, under the guidance of this town, you harvested two, over two hundred acres on the east side of the reservoir, there is extensive catastrophic erosion on the same soils with similar slopes as are on the property that's proposed to be harvested. And the plan does not account for going laterally or any other way, so the potential for erosion, which is approaching equal to the use of herbicides, is great on this property. And I'm using the word catastrophic casually, it is really serious, you should go and look. It's easy to see, walking in from the road for the first three thousand feet, you have twenty to thirty to forty to fifty feet wide, and two, three, four, and five, and six-foot deep erosion of all of its soil coming down the slope to the stream at the bottom. So it's the same soils and same conditions, so it's serious. And the reservoir is even a wetter, the west side being proposed is even wetter, it has proposed, it has several, four at least, perennial streams which are regulated more stringently. As has been said by Dean, the DCR seems to have some exemption about marking the wetlands. When you don't mark them, you're all the buffer zones that are required for everyone else who would harvest in that land, you end up letting the designation of where wetlands are to the person who's on a machine, ten feet in the air, sixty-foot long machine going ten miles an hour with twenty-two-inch tires, and deciding what his run over is not a wetland. They can't turn their dime, so essentially.
Two minutes has ended.
The wetland regulations will be disregarded on this water resource property, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Mayor's updates.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Just to comment on the forest plan, I'm sorry that I'm not able to attend the event on Friday night, but I do look forward to hearing any feedback from that. One thing I certainly agree with is that we need to have more input as we go through the process. The forest plan has not been done yet, we're waiting for a draft which should be done in the next ten days, and my hope is, as we continue through this process, that we hit pause and we take all of your input. I've been reading all of your emails, and I'm sorry that I don't respond to each individual one, but I think I received six hundred and seventy-two as of today, so I am reading them, and I would like to talk to you a little bit afterwards if that's possible. But as we move forward, right now, we're kinda in this pause thing until we get the forest cutting plan, and then really identifying how in-depth this, what this really looks like, I need to visually see it. So, we are kind of proceeding with more caution than it may have appeared, but this is still a conceptual process at this point. So I, I am hearing you, I am listening to you, and again, I'm sorry that I can't attend the meeting on, on Friday night, but I look forward to hearing about it, and if it's recorded, I'd, I'd be happy to watch that. We have had some questions from the council and from some constituents about the Sullivan School property, I believe I mentioned it to answer Counselor Fitch's question a few weeks ago. We did do an RFP, we received two responses, we are working on a purchase and sales agreement, and as soon as we get through all of the legal process, we will come back to council, share the plan with, with council. It is being sold under the assessed value, that is our intention at this point. It has previously been declared surplus, but in that council order that declared it surplus, it was added that we would return to council, so we will do that, I just ask for your patience a little bit more, but we are very, very close to getting that property off, out of city hands and into someone else's. Again, we're in the legal process, going back and forth with attorneys, so until it's finalized, that's all I can say at this point. So I ask you for your patience as we navigate that. In addition, I wanted to thank all of my colleagues in the community for the great honor and privilege we had to putting to rest PFC King today. I was very proud of our high school students from Drury and McCann, who participated in the ceremony, as well as our police and fire. It was a very humbling moment for us here in North Adams, so I thank you for everyone who participated, especially the students. Moving on to fun things, we are planning to have a circus here in North Adams, October fourth through the fourteenth. We also, on Thursday, October third, will be hosting a dog parade at six PM. On Saturday, October fifth, we will be co-hosting with the Northern Berkshire United Way, Child Care of the Berkshires, to have a children's parade and fair at Noel Field from ten AM to one. Rain location will be the Armory. On Sunday, October sixth, we will be hosting a five-k run, starting at eight AM, sign-up will be at seven, I expect the whole city counselor, council to be participating in that run. In addition, our favorite event of the year, on Sunday, October six.
Get the ambulance ready.
Is our annual fall foliage parade, beginning at one, I believe we need to line up at eleven thirty-ish.
I believe it's eleven thirty, yeah.
Yep, so I hope to see everyone there, so that's just the quick update. I know we won't be meeting till October eighth, so I wanted to publicly give the rundown of our events during fall foliage weekend. They are also posted on our events page, so thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to correct you, our next meeting is gonna be on October ninth.
That's right, October ninth, Wednesday, I knew there was something different.
Okay, moving on, Counselor, our committee reports in minutes. Hearing none, liaison updates. Counselor concerns.
Counselor Bona? Yeah, I was just asked to announce, also on October fifth, Pops Care will be having their annual dinner. Currently, they have four hundred tickets sold, they can take up to six hundred, and it's one of their bigger events, as they give out over a hundred thousand dollars a year to local caregivers and, and patients that are dealing with cancer. And as for that run, I, I'm recommending that Counselor Breen run twice.
Do I get a card each time?
There you go. Okay, Counselor Fitch?
Sure, thank you, a couple of updates, or concerns, I suppose. One is, again, the Northern Tier Rail Study is still open for public comment until, I believe it's October twelfth, and this is available, and the Northern Tier Rail is reconnecting North Station in Boston to North Adams, passenger rails haven't run here for multiple decades, but we have an opportunity to have this again if we advocate for this. And so this is on draft dash Northern Tier Passenger Rail Study, released for public comment, you can just Google that, and put in your two cents, and I think that they will be listening to that. So that's one thing that I wanted to mention. Another is, next Friday is every month's first Friday, so downtown North Adams, the shops, galleries, and several restaurants will be having little parties inside of them, some spilling out onto the sidewalk. It's also gonna be an opportunity for us to celebrate our new electrical box mural project, which, thanks to the administration, I don't know if you've noticed, but around downtown, several of the electrical boxes are being painted right now, and I think they're coming along really nicely, so everyone, please, on October fourth, go and take a look at all those, and help celebrate the artists that put in so much hard work into those projects. And then, one more thing, the, Counselor Bona brought up parking meters, I've brought this up before as well, just in, I think it was budgetary discussions, but I do also think that parking meters could potentially be updated, and perhaps upgraded, and perhaps simplified, and perhaps also, we could raise more money from it, so I just wanted to state that too, not only because Counselor Bona is my neighbor, however, at, in my seat. And then, I'm hesitant to say this, but when there are, when there's shouting or belittling language used in here, I just wanna talk about, I just wanna talk about that, and I wanna try to avoid that in the future, and I'm sorry if this is annoying, but I'm also not sorry that this is annoying, because I think it's important to talk about. There are several different methods for calming one's emotion, and one is, my favorite is box breathing, and you basically breathe in for four seconds, and you hold it for four seconds, or maybe it's three, and you exhale for another four or three seconds, and it calms the brain down. and it calms the brain down. And that's what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Yeah, through the chair of the mayor, please.
Yes, sir.
I've had a couple of people approach me, they have small children, they use our city playgrounds quite often, and they find that there's a great deal of broken equipment on every single one of them. I was just curious, do we have some kind of, are we just kind of waiting until next year because it's late in the season, or is there some kind of plan to rectify it?
No immediate plans, but if anyone finds any equipment that is damaged, they should call us or Public Services.
I'll give you a list.
Yes, please, that would be very helpful. Those are supposed to be inspected regularly by Parks and Rec and repairs being made in real time, so if that's not happening, please let me know.
Okay, because there's two instances that I know of.
Can, yeah.
There's something, I'll have to get the exact locations, but something to do with a piece of plywood that's up against a fence down near the Splash Park that is not exactly attached to anything, so it's, there's a couple of them that they think are safety concerns?
Yeah, there is a piece of plywood on top of the dinosaur playground at the top, but that should be securely fastened.
It is not.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll get you a complete list of all the equipment, if that's what you like.
Yes, that would be great. Just let me know. Thank you.
Counsel Morrow?
So, this Saturday, there is the Voices of Recovery event happening, hosted by the Half-Hulk Peer Recovery Center, and it is going to be at 1:00 p.m. at Knoll Field. And this little flyer says, "This family-friendly event is about celebrating recovery, heightening awareness, and empowering the people of this great community to make good choices and live more fulfilling and happy lives." They're going to have food trucks, they're going to have activities, social networking, they're going to have really great guest speakers, and every year that they've had this event, it's really empowering to hear the stories of different people who speak, and usually, a lot of people have all fun at it. If you're interested in having a table at this event, you can call 352-613-5263, and that'll be happening Saturday, September 28th. I also wanted to say thank you to Counselor Fitch for presenting months ago on the electrical boxes and different ways to bring them up North Adams, and the administration, and everyone involved with painting the boxes and designing them, because they are very, very, very beautiful downtown if you take a walk. They have really brought in North Adams and really showed the artsy culture, and they're, it's a really cool addition to North Adams, and I think that people who visit here and people who even live here appreciate it and will definitely be, you know, looking at them and, you know, thanks to you, so, thank you for bringing that up months ago.
Counselor Morrow, where is the Voices of Recovery being located?
It's at Knoll Field.
It's at Knoll Field. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else for council concerns? Okay, I have a quick, a couple of things. I have some correspondence, one dated September 18, 2024, from Walter. Can you pronounce your last name, please? Kudniewski? Thank you. Regarding the proposed forest harvest plan for Notch Reservoir, and also, there are three correspondences referenced in the agenda. Those have all been sent to all the counselors. You should have gotten an email with three PDFs attached that has that correspondence. You can read them at your leisure, if you haven't done so already. One concern I have, and this is for the mayor and Chief Bailey while you're here, it's been brought to my attention that the parking meters that are located adjacent to the Verizon Building off of Summer Street, there are frequently cars parked there without meter money being placed in the meters, and we're just curi, I was just curious if that is planning on, or you're planning on any enforcement in that area. I believe that is a great revenue loss, the cars being parked there without placing money in the meter, so-
We'll look into it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for concerns, any other correspondence? At this point, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.